Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 6th, meeting of the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission. Tony, would you help me with the roll call, please?
Sure. Chairman Harley?
I'm here.
Vice Chairman Margiata here, Clerk Roberts, absent Members Hughes, absent Members Orkio.
I see him.
Hammer?
Got you.
Oh, Mickey, absent Dean?
Here.
Allard?
Here.
Alternates Edwards?
Here.
Antoniak, absent, and Silver?
Here.
So we have eight, and everybody can participate. Anybody know off the top of your head whether you, well, let's put it this way. Have you all familiarized yourself with the documents from the previous meetings if you were not here? I think most of us were anyways, right?
I was gonna ask, in fact, that question and perhaps request a ruling from the Chair, since I was not at the January 3rd hearing and meeting. I have reviewed the records as supplied and the packets submitted to us. However, I was not able to listen to or view any recording of the meeting. So I'm not that totally familiar, but I am somewhat familiar with the sites involved. And in fact, I've walked around the 170 Ridge Road site. But given that I haven't actually reviewed the actual testimony and so forth of prior meeting, I'm just a bit concerned as to whether or not my participation is advised. Well, I'm certainly willing to participate if the Chair or if the applicant has no objections to my participation.
Didn't either of these, didn't one of them go before, even the meeting before?
There was a pre-application.
Pre-apps, that's what it was, okay. So, well, I guess I'm gonna leave it up to you and your better judgment when the time comes and depends on how much dialogue goes on at the meeting here today, right?
Okay, very well.
All right. So the first item on the agenda is a public hearing, application 1965Z. I'll try again, 1965-17-Z, 170 Ridge Road LLC, seeking a change of zone from A1 to Special Residential Development, called SRD, and a second application for site plan and design review. And this is for the redevelopment of a former school into 32 dwelling units at 170 Ridge Road. This is a continuation from a previous meeting, so welcome back. Perhaps you could start with really just a real brief summary of the proposal, because even Commissioner Dean has probably seen most of it or heard most of it before.
Okay. First of all, to introduce again, my name is Matthew Kalewa. I'm the attorney for the applicant. This is Biff Shakinger, landscape architect. Guy LaPlante is the principal, and tonight we have Chuck Harlow, traffic engineer from Fussin' O'Neill. We'll go through the things, and then we're gonna, I guess, focus on the two. There were two items for discussion of principal interest, which was some items from the town planners. The town planner had some comments, which the applicant has gone back and forth, and there's an updated memo February 6th with a couple suggestions for conditions. And I believe the drainage report was submitted. And then the other item of interest was traffic at the site. We do have the traffic engineer for that. But we'll start off with Biff. Do you want to give an overview?
Sure. I'm Biff Shakinger, licensed landscape architect of the state of Connecticut. As you know, basically, we're refurbishing areas that are already paved. There's a lower parking lot and an upper parking lot. We've reconfigured them slightly to make them more efficient. And by doing so, we've reduced the amount of coverage by 3,100 square feet, so that the amount, and that's mostly in the area that's collected stormwater, so that's a direct reduction in captured stormwater and runoff through this town's storm drain system. We're putting in a vortex chamber before discharge into the town right away, a storm drainage system, per the engineering comments. Should say, we've exceeded all the landscape requirements and open space requirements for the zone. We're applying for the zone change for mid-rides, which would accommodate the existing building, which is technically, because of the occupied basement, a three, a four-story building. And all of the units within the building meet the minimum requirements for square footage, one-bedroom for 600 square feet, and two-bedroom for 800 square feet. They meet and exceed those. And we've picked up all the exterior buffers and augmented them that were required before as adjacent to existing residential uses. So I prefer, I know there's a lot of consideration about the traffic impacts and our inability to adequately answer them. So I'd like to have Chuck come up from Fussin' O'Neill, the traffic engineers, whose reports you have, and let him deal with that. And then we can answer any of the other questions that are remaining for clarification or in responding to the neighbor comments. Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Chuck Harlow. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I also now work for Fussin' O'Neill. So Fussin' O'Neill did the traffic study for this development. We're comparing the traffic that existed prior to this new proposal. The school was looking at trips of 220 trips during the morning and 44 trips in the afternoon. Under this new development, we're gonna be seeing trips of about 12:00 in the morning and 15:00 in the afternoon. So there's this significant reduction in trips from what was there two or three years ago before the school closed. We also reviewed the crash data, the accident analysis in the intersection, the area. There were no crashes at the driveways on Ridge Road. There were about eight crashes at the intersection of Ridge Road and Jordan Lane, but there were no patterns there. And there were two crashes in the vicinity of the driveway that's on Jordan Lane, but none of them were related to the lane. They were sideswiped cars where they were probably maneuvering in and out of the left turn lane that's right there. So there really no crashes attributable to the facility when it was a larger facility. It was a more intense facility. Some of the comments that came back were about truck traffic and how trucks were gonna interact with the driveways. So Fussin' O'Neill, he did the modeling of what the truck turning radiuses would be to get in and out of there. SU-30, which is a single-unit box truck, medium-sized delivery truck, U-Haul vehicle type, they can get in and out of that driveway without any problems. The driveways here on Ridge Road get in and out without crossing center lines, without encroaching into the, you know, unsafely in any way. The larger delivery truck, the WB-50, the tractor-trailer is really where that comes down to, cannot really make that without going across center lines on Jordan. But we don't anticipate any tractor-trailers using this facility. And if they do, we are going to put up signs that say, we're gonna put a simple sign that looks like a tractor-trailer with a red line through it, and also subplate underneath it saying, "No tractor-trailers," just to instill that into them. My understanding is it's also gonna be put into the leases agreements with the tenants that they can't have tractor-trailers, so they know any large trucks were them coming there, though I can't see a moving van of that size to a one- or two-bedroom facility coming here that they'll have to park on Ridge Road and unload from there. Ridge Road is wide enough, it's a 20-foot half-section, so it should be more than wide enough for a truck to stop and deliver and not impede traffic on Ridge Road.
You can certainly make that a condition, and if there's an approval, motion for approval, to have that in a lease agreement, that's fine.
And there was, the town engineer also brought up, he was questioning, he had a question, concern, not a question, a concern, about fire trucks. And he submitted us a turning template for the fire truck for the town. We checked it in there, that fire trucks will easily get in and out of here, the truck that he gave us as a sample, without any problem turning, you know, going across center lines, encroaching into the oncoming traffic. Yes, sir?
Did you consider the three, I saw, you said five accidents over three years? I thought there were about three that were more serious, but you consider that normal for an intersection like that? That's a difficult uphill on Jordan Lane, and the light is kind of, you know, restrictive because of the fueling over the crest, so.
So? So the crashes at the intersection of Jordan and Ridge Road? Okay, so the, there was only eight crashes over three years. It's not an unusual number of crashes for an intersection, a signalized intersection.
It isn't.
It is not.
A normal one.
A normal one. Even a normal one is not, in fact, that's considered more low than high. So it's very, pretty low to have eight crashes.
Pretty low, considering the aspects of that.
Yes.
Could be a lot worse, so.
Well, thankfully, it's not, yes.
Do you think the light there should be changed and made different in any way? There is a left turn and exclusive, I know, going up the hill.
Yeah, and I think that's probably there for safety reasons, so that you can't, so your visibility coming up the hill to try to make your left, you know, with not being able to see the opposing traffic. So I think it's on, I think it's an exclusive turn there, is my recollection. Yep.
Now, my concern would be the site distances in that area. Have you looked at, again, the site distances coming out of the driveway and how far they can see?
So the site distances on Ridge Road are fine for the posted seam limit of 35. The site distance on Jordan, which is the state road, is, it is below the standards for the speed limits out there. It's the restriction is the crest, right? It is, it's the crest at the top of the hill. That is not changing from when it was before. There's significantly less, excuse me, significantly less cars gonna be using this driveway than there were in the past, and we didn't have any safety concerns then. We did submit this to the state of Connecticut for an approach from permit, and they did not have, they didn't express any concerns with the less-than-desirable site distance coming out of there. Also, the traffic signal will provide gaps, because of the, you know, it does go on fairly frequently. It's a fairly busy intersection. And there will be, you know, gaps almost all the time for cars to pull out when they can have to wait for the light to turn red.
Do you actually have your permit from DOT at this point already? Or have you simply talked it on ahead of time?
We have not gotten our permit. We've asked that, we sent it to them, and they came back that they were, they had no comments.
Thank you.
So they're happy with it?
Yes.
Well, they take no exception to it, I'm sure.
That's the term.
Mr. Chairman?
Tom.
First off, I'd like to ask the applicant if they have no, whether or not the applicant has any objections to my participation in this hearing, since I wasn't at the introductory hearing. I've, you know.
We don't have any objection.
Thank you. I certainly don't want to deprive the applicant of any due process considerations relative to the application. Then I do have a couple of questions, particularly for the traffic engineer. With regards to the accidents that you studied, were any, did any of the accidents involve personal injuries?
Two of the crashes involved personal injuries.
Any hospitalizations or fatalities?
There were no, there were no fatalities. I don't have the level of the injury. They occurred at the signalized intersection. It looks like people violated the traffic control.
Yeah, I, knowing that area, the traffic control issues are fairly complex. You have, you know, one going one direction, there's no left turn, or another direction, there is a left turn allowed, so. Okay, it looks like, you know, the chief safety issue is right at that juncture of Ridge Road and Jordan Lane. My chief concern is the, any traffic safety issues emanating from the lower parking lot, since the only way of access and egress to that lower parking lot is on the Jordan Lane side. And the speed limit at that point is, you know, 40 miles an hour, which is fairly, quite fast for a town road that, that's officially a state highway, so. Have you considered a no-left-turn sign as people egress from that parking lot onto Jordan Lane?
So that's not something we had considered in our, in our review, no. We're not seeing any crashes there now. We're not seeing a safety issue there now. The state of Connecticut has not indicated that they have a concern with the way the drive operates. And the volumes that will be coming in and out of this driveway under this development will be significantly less than the volumes that were using that driveway prior, when it was a school. And I would assume they were mostly teachers parking down there. So we haven't, we don't see that as a need.
Okay. I'm not sure that that issue's been really studied, but I can, I sense that no one's really raised that issue before. Okay, I think that finishes my questions for this, at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay.
Ryan?
The, that bottom parking lot, just curious what the queue is on that left turn onto Ridge Road, like if, if we have an idea of what kind of queues we're looking at. And then how much in the trip generation are you going left versus right in that lower parking lot? I assume it's around 50/50, because most people are going to 15, some people are going to 10, other people are gonna go to 15 that way.
So it was about 50/50 was my recollection of the split. And the numbers we're looking at there were...
I mean, if you have it, but I just curious.
So we're looking at 12 trips total for the whole site in the morning. So if we assume about half of them are parking down there, so about six cars would be coming, three going to the left and three going to the right.
Okay.
Really rough numbers, but that's somewhere around those numbers.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you had any info on the existing, like, non-school queue on that turn and left, but I...
So the school was like 223 trips coming and going from this area, right? Just coming in and out of this.
Right, more than.
So, you know, and again, they were split up and, upper and lower. So, and then some of them were parent drop-offs, and some of them were teachers and buses and...
Other questions on the traffic while the traffic engineer is here? Okay. Thank you. What other questions? Or, I'm sorry, I didn't want to jump in the middle of the presentation if you wanted to go on. So let me just note that a couple of the other topics that Peter was kind enough to remind us all about. Did you see his February 1st memo where he kind of reminded everybody about the outstanding issues? So...
I believe we've answered most of them, but ask, please ask.
Sure. Rooftop plan and details of mechanicals, including the screening.
It's the February...
February 6th memo from whom?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say 6th? February, February 1st? I'm sorry if I misstated that. It's right down at the very bottom of the...
On February 1st, okay.
Yeah, we have.
So the traffic was the big one, I think.
Mm-hmm.
But the other things that were kind of not completely vetted were the use of the porches and what covenants or restrictions you might be putting on that, fire escapes.
Oh, okay. We, let me address that. The fire escape, the metal fire escapes are not needed by code. So we're removing them, and we will have use covenants on the end units on the three outside porches on either side. So we're keeping the brick, you know, actually, let me see it this way. You recall, we're keeping, actually, it's only, it's only two levels. There's two porches at the end, and then the old metal superstructure for the fire escapes go on the backside and go all the way to the top. So we're removing those. They're in fairly poor shape as it is. They're not needed for the legal access egress points because of all the other access points we have in the building and the elevator. So we'll have covenants for the two, for all of those four, and there's only four end units, so there are covenants on the use of that, so they won't be hanging laundry out there and putting...
So let's go over some of those covenants, because we've had a couple of these before us, and hanging laundry is the big one, right?
Right.
What other thoughts were coming to our minds?
Putting appliances out there.
Yes, thank you.
Assembling small cars, if you can get one there. No, but, you know, within reason.
Maybe shall be limited to things like a grill, right?
Right, a grill and temporary furniture, but seasonal, not permanent furniture out there.
No issue with the fire marshal, or did I miss that?
Yeah, he said there's fire, sufficient fire egress inside.
Yes.
Inside, egress inside.
The building sprinkled too.
You don't need those fire escapes.
I know, they don't need them.
Right. Yeah, and we don't want to take...
Fire, fire.
Yeah, he's been present at all of our meetings for, you know, general review of the plans. The other, the aspect is, we really feel that the two brick porches, two-tiered brick porches on either side are really part of the historic nature of the building, and to tear them off would cause more damage than it, than just refurbishing them along with the whole facade treatment that we're doing, and cleaning off, you know, the cornices and the coins, and replacing the windows, as we discussed.
Thank you. Good. Tom?
One question that has caught, no, came up, and I noticed that a number of those that testified at the last meeting, people from, from the community that were registering opinion, an issue was brought out relative to what you're going to do on the exterior, the cleaning of the, these rather ancient bricks. And what I haven't seen is anything relating to the effect of the permeability of the bricks following the cleaning. You know, whether or not the bricks are going to be more moisture-absorbent, or whether you're going to apply something like a silicone application or something to prevent moisture from infiltrating these ancient bricks with a mortar. Has been a problem with some of the older dwellings, older buildings in some of the towns in Connecticut that have been converted from one use to a residential use, say, a commercial factory-type use into, you know, residential apartment. And I wonder if you have any opinions, or have you researched that issue?
We haven't done all of the research, but, you know, the bricks do need to be cleaned. They need to be, maintain a uniformed appearance. So we're willing to provide treatment, you know, after cleaning, that facilitates that. You know, for future protection of the brickwood, you know, mold inhibitors and, you know, applicants after cleaning.
Yeah, my assessment is that, you know, the brickwork there is fairly, you know, is pretty solid, but, you know, it is, it's old, and there's repairs needed, you know, in some parts of the building.
There's definitely some repair needed, you know, which we're gonna take care of. Tuck pointing, rerouting, loose bricks, chipped bricks.
And of course, one of the key issues is, you know, in any building, particularly in an older structure, is moisture protection, because, you know, water is an, you know, is an enemy of any human-built structure.
It would certainly be in the applicant's interest.
Yes, it would be, as well as the interests of the apartment, you know, occupants, once they're occupied. Oh, one other thing that has occurred to me, whether or not you've had any studies or considerations relative to the, you know, occupancy level and, you know, vacancies, turnover of population within, within the dwelling. Do you have any anticipation in your business model relative to that? What's your anticipated vacancy level and anticipated turnover rate?
We don't have a high level of vacancy expected. You know, it's gonna be basically a brand-new building in a desirable town. Yeah, it's a perfect location. And, you know, hopefully, turnover is low. We haven't studied that part of it. But, you know, typical leases are from one to three years. Ideally, we retain as many tenants as we can.
So, George?
Yeah, a couple of issues on Peter's memo. The 600 and 800 square feet units you've verified, those as indicated in that memo?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we resubmitted the revised plan to Peter, so he could review it. He brought it to our attention that, we had averaged them out, but apparently one or two were short on. So we redid the plan, resubmitted it for Peter's review several weeks ago.
And also, I notice in the minutes too, reflecting on him, we've been over this for quite a few weeks, so we gotta go back and review this. You will provide more parking in the future if, if some people think these apartments could contain more kids than you would expect in this day and age. Millennials tend to be having more in these kind of units sometimes. Now, again, there's public transportation.
Right, and we've accommodated for bike storage and everything. Yeah, well, the nice thing is, because we have a more designed, multi-use, activity pavement area in the back, which goes to our dumpster location. We could easily convert that, especially if we need more handicap parking at that ground level for access into the elevator corridor.
And the accessways are wider out front, that you could actually...
Actually, we, yes, we could, we could, we can parallel, we could up to, we could parallel park up to seven spaces on that, using the dimension of 10 feet wide and 22 feet long. Because it's 24 feet wide.
You don't see that as any kind of an issue?
No, no. And the nice is, we don't have to increase any of the coverage or change any of the, you know, the dimensional, the increase in stored drainage runoff, because it's already been accommodated for our current drainage analysis.
I have to do is paint lines.
Has Peter got any comments to his memo, or have they met everything?
Just for the record, I did receive a revised floor plan, because as was noted, some of the units didn't meet our minimum requirement. So we did receive a revised floor plan, and I did review that. It does exceed our 600 and our 800 square feet, based on the number of bedrooms. There are a number of conditions in my memo, so when we get to the point of someone wanting to make a motion, I'd be happy to provide you with a list of suggested conditions. At this point, I think I've got a list of seven conditions that should be, should be attached. So before we get there, could we talk again about the windows? I think you made a soft commitment to probably end up replacing all the windows. Was that what I remember, or was it hit or miss?
Everything's gonna be consistent. If we can't find the manufacturer of the existing windows and make them look, you know, match what's there, then we'll have to replace them.
Okay. All right, thank you. And the rooftop mechanicals, we started going through the fact that you have some sort of, what do you call it?
Parapet.
Parapet on top already, and it's elevated, so you have relatively little viewing. Was there any more information about the size of the unit you were expecting up there?
Numerous companies make a low-profile unit. GE, Mitsubishi, it's very ideally suited for, you know, this problem. So, you know, those all be available in the construction drawings when those are submitted to the town, you know, for review.
And how big is the parapet? Remind me?
It's almost 30 inches.
30 inches.
If not more. Most of the low-profile units are gonna be 24 to 28 inches.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board before I look out at the public and see, Tom?
Just a couple of quick questions architecturally. What, oh, once the renovation work has been accomplished, what is the planned R-rating for the ceilings and exterior walls of the facility?
I think the current exterior walls are required to be 21 and the ceiling 39.
And that's current or following rehab?
It's, I think it applies to renovations also. But we have to have our MEP consultant officially tell you.
Will that be on the plans?
Yeah, it'll be in the construction drawings. I mean, everything's gonna be brought to... I mean, everything's gonna be brought to current code or, or higher. Energy efficiency is pretty important these days.
That's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah. No, it's, uh, part of the plan is to make it a energy-efficient building. I mean, we're not talking net zero or, you know, fully green, but we want it to function, you know, good for a long time, so using some upgraded products on insulation or heating and cooling is an easy way to do that.
Particularly insulation. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this proposal? I assumed as much, so come on up. I wasn't gonna mention the attachment I have, because I figured you'll take care of that.
Tom Azarella, 600 Walke Hill Road. I didn't even say anything yet. I spoke previously. I'm not a big fan of the development, but it appears that this is gonna get approved one way or another, so I'd like to switch gears and offer a couple comments on the plan. My biggest problem with the, with the plan is the exit onto Jordan Lane. I went up there again this weekend. It's just a terrible way to exit, and the point that gets brought up several times here in the presentation is that we're not changing anything with the parking lots or the entrances and exits, and that I find a problem with, because that, nothing says that it's, it was done properly, or it was a good design. And maybe there's an opportunity here to do something better. I wonder if they've considered eliminating, completely eliminating, the Ridge Road exit and connecting the parking lots to the southern border rather than the northern border. My other problem with that parking lot is the property line to the adjacent homeowner, the lower lot. If you look at it now, there's a steel guardrail that's basically right on the property line. Those people have been staring at car bumpers for 30 years or whatever, and if I understood correctly, there's supposed to be a 15-foot buffer along the property line that the applicant is gonna ask for a waiver for. If I understood correctly, there would be two rows of trees by the current regulations, and they're asking for an exception to that. And I think that, that parking lot, the way it is right now, is an absolute eyesore to the, to the property owner on Jordan Lane. So, those are my comments. I, I think if they did look at going to the, wrapping the driveway around the southern side of the lot, they would have to eliminate that accessory building. Maybe not in their plans, but I, I would like you to consider it. I think it's a dangerous intersection without the driveway. And those cars just come flying over the hill. When you're pulling out, there's, there's no way of avoiding it. And, yes, it's gonna be reduced traffic from what the school was, but it still doesn't say that it was a good design previously. I think it was a poor design. I know there's some very steep terrain there. Maybe it was the only option, but I'd like to hear a little bit about the possibility of, of changing the flow. Thank you.
So, I was confused. I don't know if I just misheard it, or whether you misstated what you were looking for in terms of the different access points. The Jordan Lane exit is the concern in your mind?
Yes.
And that's the one that you would want to close?
Yeah.
Not the, I thought I heard ridge, closed Ridge Road.
No, maybe I apologize if I misspoke.
So, so you would, you would propose to take the access point down there, close it off of Jordan, and move everybody up to the, and have to come around the front?
Connect, connect the two lots at the southern end of the property.
Yeah.
Instead of the two exits.
So, I'll let the applicant offer their thoughts on that.
Thank you.
So, there was also the thing, I wanted everybody to know that you had submitted some stuff to Peter about some of the issues going on in Rocky Hill, following the conversation that you had here last-
Yeah, that was regarding the, you know, controlling of how many residents live in each unit, which is, as the article explained, is a problem in Rocky Hill. And I realize that most of these units are single-bedroom units, but you still, there is a real problem that exists where residents sign up for a lease, and they have too many people for a 600-square-foot unit, and there's no way to police that. Rocky Hill's trying to, well, they've made it a, an ordinance. I don't really know how they enforce it. There's no, I don't think you can put it in a lease that says you can only have so many people per, per unit, but-
I'm guessing you probably can, easier than you can put it into the zone.
You can put it in there, but how do you enforce it?
Yeah, well, fair enough.
Someone has a child, what do they say? You gotta move out, because now you have a kid? Come on. So, I don't know how to, how to get around that, but, like I said, when I got up here, I'm not an advocate of the project, but it appears that it's gonna go through, and I think we have plenty of apartments in Weatherfield right now. Don't see the need for any more. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anybody else would like to speak on the application?
Phil Kennedy, 181 Ridge Road. I have to reiterate much of what was just made in terms of the dangerousness of the, that particular intersection, and I wanted to bring up a couple of points I haven't heard yet. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think I'm a pretty good observer of human nature. And I go through that intersection almost on a daily basis, either with my car or walking over to Stop and Shop. And the one thing I notice most of all is how much that intersection is abused. We can talk about 35 miles an hour and traffic studies and accidents and whatnot, but I have to say that if you go there and just sit there for half an hour and watch, that almost half the people break the law in some way going through that intersection, either making illegal right turns on red, making left turns going north into Hartford, running red lights, coming barreling through from Hartford, going down Ridge Road at 50 miles an hour, trying to beat the light. It's a very, very difficult intersection to manage, even without adding the additional hazards that this property would add to it. I have one solution, and I don't know whether it's a logical one, or whether it's, it's possible, and that would be to slow down that intersection, for the good of this property and also for the good of the neighborhood. I've been in that area long enough to see that intersection before there were traffic lights. And I've also seen what happens when the power goes out in our area, and there are no traffic lights, and the police come and put up stop signs. It works beautifully. People come to the stop sign, they wait their turn, and then they proceed. It works at Wells Road, it works down on Jordan Lane and Woke Hill Road 98% of the time. Sure, during drive time, you may get a little backup, you may get some people who are a little antsy, honk their horns and whatnot, but I think that the traffic lights, over the years, have made the situation much worse. Probably the traffic engineers looked at the statistics and felt that because of the increasing volume, that that was a good candidate to have there, but because of the topography of the land, the way that we have some blind curves and blind hills going over Ridge Road there, it just seems to me that that whole situation needs to be slowed down, and I think that would help this property, particularly on the entrance to Jordan Lane. Now, I know that's a state intersection, you may or may not have influence over what happens there, but it's something to consider. As I say, 98% of the time, it would work perfectly. You know, during drive time, you may get some little backup. The other consideration is that the way that building was used in the past, it was used during business hours, basically, and traffic came and went during the day in a drive time. Very little traffic exited or entered the building at night. If you have an apartment building there, you're gonna have traffic all times of the day, and that intersection coming up over Ridge Road, going down Jordan Lane at dusk or at night is gonna be a nightmare, particularly with people coming, flying over there. There's just no way that they're gonna be able to see people coming out of that driveway. So, I think that might be a good option to consider. It might inconvenience a few of us in the neighborhood where we have to wait a little longer to get out at drive time, but I think it might be the best possible solution to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. This man?
Good evening. My name is Kristen Soto, and I'm a resident of 557 Jordan Lane, which is three houses down the hill from this proposed project. I had a few comments both about traffic, as well as some of the proposals to deal with traffic, as somebody who lives right there. The first thing that I wanted to say is that I am not a fan of the idea of putting a no-left-turn sign at the Jordan Lane entrance. And my reason for that is that my in-laws conveniently, or not so conveniently, live point-two miles away on Ridge Crest Circle. And what will happen is if you put a no-left-hand-turn sign there, people will fly down the hill, fly through Ridge Crest Circle, and fly up Lakava to be able to turn around. It's a practice that people already do, and you'll basically be forcing the residents of that apartment building, who are trying to make a left turn, to do this if you put up such a sign. I agree that making a left turn out of there is also not a great option, but since my in-laws do watch my infant daughter, who would be walking on sidewalks in that neighborhood, making that a more hazardous place to live wouldn't be in our best interest either. In terms of the construction estimates, again, I am not a traffic engineer, but as someone who lives there, there are a few things that are unique about the neighborhood. All of the, all of the recommendations that have been made have been based on proposed use of the road, so people following speed limits, people obeying traffic. As someone who lives on that hill, I can tell you that nobody drives even the 40 miles per hour going down the hill and goes much faster. I nearly get rear-ended on a daily basis going down the hill and trying to make a right turn into my driveway. So, not only is it a concern for people turning out of the driveway, but for people coming over Ridge Road, trying to slow down and safely make a right turn into that property's entrance. Additionally, at that, at certain times of day, going up the hill, there can be really blinding sun glare, where you can't see anything, let alone the traffic signal or people attempting to pull out of a driveway. And so, those are just sort of my opinions that I wanted to officially put on record about some of the recommendations and some of the traffic that's already been said. My second thing is actually a question. At the January 3rd meeting, one of the women on the panel had talked about their concern that there were differences between the renderings and the mockups that they were seeing and the actual work that was being done. I believe that the example that she had given was the rendering of the windows and how on there they were darker windows, and they may or may not be replaced. And as a result of that, there was a discussion about putting some conditions on the property to assure the type of work that was done, and I wanted to know if any consideration had been given to that, and if any considerations had been placed on this project for conditions since that last meeting, and if so, what those conditions were. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll answer the real, the last one, because it's the easiest. There are no conditions on it yet, but we talked about the windows a few minutes ago, so there may well be by the time we're done, if we're approving it. Other, anybody else wishing to speak on it before we get the application, applicant back?
My name is Mario Tomasi. I live on 236 Ridge Crest Circle. I'm neighbors to Weatherfield Recreation, and I'm neighbor to 170 Ridge Road. I have a question about the fence. It would be one kind of fence all the way around, or would be piecemeal, one different than another piece, different? Each neighbor's gonna have their own choose, or have a fence, or, that's the question.
Very good. There is a fence in the proposal, and, and we were gonna have him-
It's supposed to be a fence around, we know that, but it would be one type of fence for everybody, or just one, or each one request what they want?
I appreciate it, and we'll, we'll have them answer that when they come back. All right?
And the next, not too important, is we always talking about the top building. What happened with the bottom building? Is it gonna be knocked down or stay the way it is?
There is a plan for it, and I'll let them answer that as well.
So, that's why I never heard anything about it.
Okay, it was all described at the last, but you're right, we haven't gone over it this one, so we'll let them respond to that for you.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Anybody else like to hear? All right, well, with that, would the applicant come back and join us? And maybe you could take care of the, you know, what I think are the easy ones, the last couple you just heard there openly.
Sure. First, I guess I'd just like to emphasize that, you know, from the, from the prior use, the site is going to be improved, both aesthetically and traffic, and we've been focusing on some issues that are, were common to the, the prior use and, and the current use, but, you know, it would be easier if this were Kansas. There was no hills, but it's not. Biff could, Biff could address the, the question about the connecting parking lots. I don't think it works without putting a double diamond ski slope sign between the two of them. And the left-hand turn prohibition, I was gonna say something about, you know, your human nature is, if you're gonna go right, you're gonna have to do something to get back, or, you know, turn around in the neighbor's driveway, or, yeah, so.
So, just to clarify-
Oh, and-
The grades between the top parking lot and the bottom parking lot are too steep for you to add a car maneuver between the two?
And, yes, and, and just, and just very quickly, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Biff. Regarding the number of people in the units, I mean, that's, if there's a concern about that, it's a concern with every single apartment unit, and whether it's ten-town, every single single family home in town. It's not unique to, to here, and I'll just leave it at that.
Hi, I appreciate all the comments that were made the last time and this time as well. In general, we, we did explore connecting up through. It would be an extremely steep connection, and the other thing, there's really two other deleterious things. One is, it gets, we, right now, we have an open, we have two types of open space that are functionally usable, and one's in the lower level, where we can have more activity. It's a big open grass area at the base of the hill. Then on the top of the hill, we have more social space that we have allocated for also community gardens, and, which we think will add a pride of place for the people living in the apartment, and they'll be taking more care of it. We believe with these amenities, it'll make it more attractive, the rents will be higher, and you'll have, I think, good occupants that are vested in the quality of the care of the landscape. If we put a connecting road up there, one, it's extremely, it'll be at an extremely severe grade, it would destroy an inordinate amount of land around it to make, and get rid of those valuable landscape, open space functions, which are part of the requirement for the SRD as well. It would also increase our coverage to the point, and now we're increasing coverage, which would then mean we'd have to think about putting in a detention basin, which will then get rid of all the rest of the open space. So, the usable open space will be a basin that will be somewhat inundated during street, uh, storm events. So, basically, it would change the whole character of the site to make it either road steepness or a place to hold stormwater. So, we don't think that was a good trade-off for that, if it, if it could be accomplished safely to begin with. The other thing is, by the time you hook up back to the south side, now, we're gonna have a very limited connection between the south lobe on the upper level and the, and the north lobe. We'd have to put out a big retaining wall to get the 24 feet for the two-way traffic that became that issue, so.
Which, which we discussed last time, the whole, the whole access on the front of the property is limited to begin with, and to bring everybody from down below, just exacerbates that already-
And, and again, I understand traffic is always a big, we all drive, so everybody is very vested in, in understanding of traffic engineering, per se. But, again, the volume, we're not increasing the volume of the actual capacity of the parking lot below, and we're not, we don't believe we're even remotely increasing the, the actual traffic volume that will be proposed, for this proposal. And now, in answer to your question, right now, there's- And now, in answer to your question, right now, there's existing chain-link fences as a safety component, I think, because of the steep side slopes and the difference between the top and the lower terrace. Here, we're not recommending dismantling them, they're in good shape. We are going to replace, and it is a consideration with the adjacent neighbor, and he was here the last time, and he seemed to be happy with the thing. We're going to all wood guardrails. We're getting rid of the metal guardrails. We're actually a little further back than the existing parking area, in the proposed parking area. We will have a ornamental six-foot-high solid wood fence. And that section where we don't have the full fifteen feet, and that's why they'll waiver, so that he will not, the neighbor will not be looking, where we can put the double row of evergreen trees, it'll be there, where we we can't because of the grade constraints and the existing conditions that are already there, we're putting a solid wooden fence, and that's the only section that will be like that.
Could you perhaps use the map as a reference as to where the fencing would be?
That wood fence is here, it's over a hundred and twenty feet long, I forget the actual dimension, but it covers this whole area where it's adjacent to, the moment we can get to fifteen feet, we go to fifteen feet and double-load it, evergreen planting.
Okay. And how about along the the south side of the property, because there's a fence there or not?
There's an existing chain-link fence there, too. It's a steep run-down, and it's there, we're not taking it out, we think-
I remember we had the conversation with the property-
Right, and the neighbor was fine with that, because we explained we would be, the double-screen evergreen planting would have considerably quicker and have significant impact in shedding, in blocking the view. To get a functional fence to block her view from in there, because her second floor has a balcony off of it, that's her deck, we'd have to have a thirty or forty-foot high fence there to-
So, so the south side is landscaped?
Yes, it's the whole south side. There's existing mature evergreens, and we've double-loaded it all the way down and around to the public open space in the center on the south side. I mean, on the east side, excuse me.
So, I think we answered-
Oh, yeah, I'll get to the lower building, too. The lower building will be refurbished just like the upper building, it'll look exactly like it, it'll get the same loving care and treatment for renovation. It will be used for a maintenance office and also a flexible social space for the, as an amenity for the apartment dwellers.
And we talked about the rendering, and they may not be dark windows like that, but they're gonna be consistent windows, that's what we talked about.
Right, and we also may say that if that can't be replicated, it's the intent of the developer, and you can put it as a condition that window styles would be maintained consistent throughout the facade.
That's correct.
And that's correct. I like saying correct stuff, so it's easy dealing.
Alright, condition of the parking lot, you are paving the parking lot over again, right?
Yes, modestly reconfiguring to tighten it up, so it isn't quite as big, and we're also resurfacing all the pavement.
Alright, so I think in terms of the architectural elements that we heard, parking, fencing, you've kind of spoken to all those in the lower building, the windows. So, is the last thing really just the whole traffic discussion again? And you referred to the fact that you really can't connect them?
Without totally destroying the character of the site, and then
What's left of the site.
Basically changing the whole nature of the application, and I think, and I think destroying some of the great amenities that have made this site special, so.
So I recognize some of the traffic proposals, you know, like changing the signal, et cetera, to be outside the scope of your work, but I do happen to know, and I love to put them on the spot, what the other gentleman's thoughts might be.
Well, that's a lot of traffic engineer discussion. Any more general questions on the site?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. The out-building that you said would be a tenant-
The NX building, yeah.
Roughly how much occupiable square feet will be in that?
It's, I think, the building, the exterior dimensions, it's one thousand six hundred and sixty square feet. It's a little under seventeen hundred square feet.
And how's it gonna be outfitted, what type of setup for tenant use in there? Is it gonna, is there gonna be a cooking kitchen?
No.
Is there gonna be seating, is there gonna be tables?
No, no, a big open area that they can have, maybe some technology, computers set up, and also, you know, removable tables and chairs that they wanna have a social function or something. And then there'll be an office for the maintenance.
Okay, and would there be any, would there be any restrictions imposed by the landlord in terms of the hours that that space could be used, you know, not in the middle of the night, for example?
Absolutely. We don't want people in there at all hours of the evening, so they'll be, you know, open at nine and, you know, close at eight or ten, or-
And then a couple other, just back to the windows, a couple quick questions. One is, what, what level of discussion did you have with the design review committee in terms of the windows? For example, you know, I mean, did you get into a discussion of whether you were replacing some or all, did you get into a discussion of what type of product you would use and what they would look like if you replaced them?
I mean, the current windows are less than ten years old. The discussion we had at design review wasn't much different than what we've been having here. We've committed to making all the windows in the building uniform. And if we can't do that, we'll have to replace them with new windows, which would all be uniform anyway.
Right, you don't, you don't happen to have a photo of existing condition windows with you, do you? There you go, okay.
They'll be without the AC units in them, but-
Right, right, but so if you did go to all-new, are you thinking of going to darker as part of that, as you've shown in the rendering?
That's what we'd like to do if we have to go all-new windows.
What do you mean you'd like to do, you haven't decided yet?
Well, I mean, it's just a tint on the glass, so, yeah, that's what we're planning on doing.
Alright, and again, but Peter did design review and its report get into that level?
Their report, I was not at the meeting, Denise really needs to answer that, there were no, the understanding was that I think specifically the brick treatment needed to go back to them with some details as to how that was going to be taken care of. And then the window question was unresolved at the time that they were reviewing it, so I think the understanding was probably the final, when the final decision on that is made, they may have to review it again.
Okay, in terms of whether it's a partial repair or replacement-
Right, so since the question really had not been resolved at that point, I think whatever the final determination was at the time, we would make that call, and as I say, it may have to go back to them for more approvals.
And I guess I would just reiterate, I don't, you know, I guess I personally would not, you know, try to force you to commit upfront to replacing all the windows, but I feel if you, you know, if you did do something different and really spruced it up and improved the look and the character from what's there now, I think that would be a great thing and an opportunity to, you know, to benefit the whole area. So hope that you seriously consider that.
With respect to some of this latter discussion, have you looked into, or are you participating in any of the historic preservation programs that are offered by the state or federal government, getting on the National Registry of Historic Places, for example? Financing that's available for restoring older buildings to an historic standard, things of that sort?
We really haven't gotten into any historic tax credit financing or anything like that, it's a very long, drawn-out process. And we'd prefer not to be involved in that as of right now.
I can understand that consideration in terms of for business flexibility, but in terms of, you know, stability for the property, for long-term preservation of, you know, appearance and the like, some of the considerations that some of the neighbors have expressed, as well as the overall historic integrity of the building, you know, to keep it, you know, well-maintained over a period of, you know, decades or centuries. I would certainly encourage you to investigate that process.
We're open to the conversations about, you know, keeping it as it looks now, I mean, that's what we're trying to do.
I would recommend that you contact the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation. They have circuit riders and other staff that are available to consult with. It's free of charge, can also assist you in terms of, you know, tax, historic tax credit applications and the like.
If you have a contact name over there, I'd be happy to take that information and give them a ring.
We can certainly get that to you, but I think, Tom, the history of the building and the architectural style of the building is such that it wouldn't beat the criteria for designation, so I can certainly pass on the information, but I don't think it's gonna meet some of the threshold requirements to get that kind of designation and then open it up for that type of funding, so.
I have that suspicion myself, but I think it's worth exploring.
George?
Yeah, along the same lines. I was even thinking of voting against this application at one point. And it's probably one of the issues while I've been on this commission, at least in the last ten or twenty years, that I've been kind of ambivalent on. Now, I may not have a lot of colleagues that go along this line, but my two previous colleagues bring up something important to me that I get concerned that sometimes we treat the north western part of our community quite differently than where Joe lives, and where everything on the other side of the tracks is an historic area, and it's treated carefully. I'll even say with kid gloves, because it's important that the historic nature of this town, the largest historic district in the state, is treated well. Like, we call ourselves a tree town, and proud of that over many, many years, among other things, but the historic aspect of this is important that my two colleagues bring up, and I just hope, because this is an old state facility, and you're bringing it back, that you're doing whatever you can to make it a quality structure in an area that feels as being put on with multifamily housing. And so, that's my statement at the moment.
Ryan?
Just a couple cool questions on the, that accessory lot is, are there any handicap spots on that one?
Yes.
So we're-
Yes, and we have a new, a new handicap ramp access to the building as well.
Oh, there is one?
Yes.
Alright, I didn't see it in the-
It's all been detailed and laid out there, so.
Did that rendering show it? I only saw the straight-
That's it.
That straight one right there?
And then we have a full ramp system up to this-
Oh, to the, to the accessory building, but not to the main building? The main building has its own set of handicap spots that-
They're all along in here, and they're directly, directly outside and accessible to the
Okay.
main corridor and the elevator.
Right. I just, I couldn't recall if we had-
And we put in a handicap accessible sidewalk system to get down, and then we have a ramp system, stairs up in front, which that we're not required, we thought that that would be prudent to try and get people to have handicap accessible bus service, we want to accommodate their ability to get up and into the building as well.
I guess my ultimate concern was just that we're not counting the total number of handicap spots for purposes of the occupancy of the main building and not including any of the spots that are down at the bottom lot in the number that are needed for the main building, because it's quite a trek if you're forced on a wheelchair to take that
Right.
steep hill up.
Which is why we accommodate it down below, too.
So we're, the down-below spots aren't counted towards the occupancy of the main building? If that makes sense? So, if we have, if they need five spots,
Yeah.
for instance, for the main building,
Yeah.
and they do three up top and two down bottom, those two down bottom aren't necessarily appropriate for the main building?
We only need, we need, four-nine, we need two.
Total.
Yeah, so we have two up at the top and one at the bottom.
And you have the two up the top?
Yes.
Okay, then, that's it, that's-
Alright, so-
You know, I just wanna say, contrary to my colleague, I think we've given this considerable consideration, we spent a lot of time on this. And as, as a planning zoning commission, I think we've put a lot of time and effort to make sure that what's gonna happen is gonna be successful and is gonna look well. It's gonna look good and be a credit to the community. It's not in the historic district, we have other commissions, so we're getting involved with other issues, and I think we've got a- I'm trying to think, the design review committee, and I'll talk to my best friend Joe Hickey about it, but I don't know what he's gonna say to me. But did they take a good look at this and ask the same questions that the three of us have mentioned?
I assume they did.
Because I hear this response, and we can do it, or we might do it, and might be able to, a little bit wishy-washy. I'm sorry, I'm gonna be very blunt about it. They're not gonna do it, boy.
Alright, so do we need to go any further with the traffic ideas that were expressed?
I'm just, I'm curious, I thought that we had a positive referral from our initial meeting with design review, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But there was still some outstanding stuff.
Absolutely, yeah, but I just wanna make sure I remember, I remember I was at that meeting, I'm going, I thought-
I think you'll probably have to go back, right, you have signage and maybe the windows and-
But we're more than happy to, we fear we're at a good point to do that, so.
Mr. Chairman, I hope some of their thoughts and my comments will be provided, Peter.
Oh. I'm sure Denise-
To that second meeting, thank you.
I'm sure Denise can bring that to them, right?
Mr. Chairman, one final, I'm sorry. One final comment in case it's not clear with respect to the windows. If they do not need to be replaced, they're not gonna be replaced just to replace them. If they do need to be replaced for functionality, then they're gonna be consistent, and they're gonna be, they're all replaced and be consistent throughout.
They're all gonna be consistent in
Correct.
the product and the look. They're not gonna be-
Yes. They will all be replaced and they'll be, they'll be uniform.
They're gonna be same quality. Now, sort of like the historic district requires, they may say certain materials have to be used and have to be consistent with other aspects of the building, yeah.
I'm, I'm not gonna go to Home Depot and try to buy a replacement window to slap in there and fool you, I mean, it's gonna be pretty obvious.
Like consistency.
So, Joe?
I was just gonna say, I guess theoretically, we could say what the applicant has just said in our approval that the windows are to be uniform, and I guess I'm wondering if we could actually go an extra step and say, in addition to the extent that they are repairing or replacing any, we'd like them to submit the plan and what they propose to do for review by staff or us, or something.
I think you're absolutely right, there are ways to make sure that that gets into the record and are held to it. Again, I think the traffic operations out on the street are, you know, they're certainly beyond the scope of this particular property owner. But Charles, since I know you know the intersection, and I know you have a history, what would your responses be in terms of a stop sign control? And where I'm heading here is, I mean, it may be appropriate for this commission to turn around and tell DOT, you know, or as a town, we'd like you to consider, just as, you know, a backdrop to this conversation.
So we didn't count the intersection existing volumes and where it is today. Whether it would operate as a multi-way stop, four-way stop versus a traffic signal, you really need to do a study to do that, right? So you'd have to check the volumes, if the volumes have dropped significantly since the signal was put in, and that's possible, a lot of numbers in the state have gone down over time. We're doing a lot more road diets all over the place because the volumes on our four-lane roads really aren't there anymore, so it's possible that a study would show that a different type of traffic control at this intersection would work beyond a traffic signal. I wouldn't say a roundabout because of the grades, that wouldn't be one of the intersections that would work. But multi-way stop could work, the only thing a multi-way stop is that grade in the winter is a tough one to do on multi-way stop, with a traffic signal, there's better odds that you'll be moving up the hill when you get there, I mean, you will be stuck stopping there sometimes, but it's not every time, so.
And as a user of the Ridge Road, the other Ridge Road, the stop sign, I know this, I know there's plenty of reasons why you don't want that stop sign up there. George?
Two key people here, I'm pointing to you, and, yeah. Can you petition, could that lady, for example, is, you know, possible? Or others, petition the State Traffic Commission in any discussion of this particular site and intersection that may be taken flight, and I'm sure they have, or you've already done it enough.
So they can, there's certainly, anybody is welcome to write a letter to the commissioner, to the traffic, the Division of Traffic Engineering, or to the State Trap, the OSTA, Office of State Traffic Administration, used to be the State Traffic Commission. Everybody changes their names, different letters. Office of State Traffic Administration. So, and they would review it, I mean, it would, it's, it's, you know, if the town were to ask that, it would probably get higher standing. I don't wanna say they wouldn't, they do take letters from when I was working there, letters from citizens were constant, and we looked at everything they wrote to us, I mean, it would, a private citizen would certainly ask that question, and it would be reviewed as it could be. The first thing that they would do if a private citizen asked was we would have called the town and say, what do you think, you think this is a good idea or not? If the town says, you don't think it's a good idea, then the Department of Transportation is not going to go any further. If the town says, yeah, it's a great idea, or at least, yes, we want you to look at it, they would go for, forward.
Now, the gentleman here has seen that intersection at certain times, many times in the past while he's probably lived there, so he, when he's reciting this sort of thing, he may have strong feelings that something else might have worked in the past, might still be partially or somewhat considered today.
Traffic conditions change and, you know, maybe a different, a different way would work, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't know.
Do they pay attention to that?
It doesn't, doesn't, they do.
You wouldn't know.
He's, he was the head of traffic, that's why I put it to him. He's the guy, he's the guy you write to, or you're used to.
Used to write to me, yes, not any longer.
And, and I appreciate your word of the petition, that's the, that's the better word, I was stumbling over how to say it, but, you know, the town could petition the DOT if we thought it was worth doing, you know, as a result of the conversation going on here, that's, that's what I was getting at. Other, other questions for the applicant, other questions for the public at this point? Okay?
I just had one, we were talking fences before, there's one fence that hadn't been talked about, theories about the census right across the street from, through the street on the southwest corner of the property on Ridge Road, chain link fence. It was put up there to keep the kids in the playground from wandering out.
Right, it's along here.
On, on southwest.
Oh, here.
No, southwest.
Yeah, I'm sorry, south?
South.
Yeah, here, yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
When the playgrounds put in, they put in the chain link fence, before that for years, decades, no fencing. I'm just wondering whether there's a real need to have that there or whether that could be removed.
So I can't remember with the property owner who was here talking to us about that before.
She, she was fine with it as long as we've had the other green screen, so.
Talking about, on the southern part of the property, not the southwestern.
You mean it's up on the, you mean it's up on the road?
You mean, you mean up by the, on the road, on Ridge Road?
On the playground, sir. Is it, wait here.
Yeah, the reason that's there, I assume, is, is there's a, there's a drop off off a wall that's, that's, that would be const.
There wasn't any there until the school went in and it was because it was a playground right here and they wanted to keep the kids in the playground.
Well, I think that fence is important there because it, it's, it would be constitute, we, uh, it's a guardrail at that point.
Exactly.
Because of the drop, there's a, there's a big transformer pad and then there's a retaining wall that's over two and a half feet high. So that would be, it's in effect a guardrail now. No, it's guardrail for pedestrians, because we're making a connection to the sidewalk to Ridge Road.
It's a safety feature for the topside, not keeping children.
Feature for the top, right.
Worked for a hundred years.
Well, unfortunately.
A change in codes, yeah, exactly.
Has to meet code now, yeah.
If we could.
Being an old building, I'm pretty sure there would be lots of asbestos in there, I should be worried about what they're working on it?
Actually, we've had asbestos and lead-based paint tests done at the building. There is no known presence of asbestos or lead-based paint there currently.
Probably cleaned it up at some point if it preexisted, right?
Probably Hartford Hospital had to.
Alright, um, assuming there's no more questions from the public, is there any more questions, do we need any more input from them, should we be talking about closing the hearing? Do we?
Move to close?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. So, so let's talk about the, the action. Would anybody like to propose an action, put a motion on the table? It should be easy. He's going to do the work.
Peter, you, you have a bunch of special conditions you want to.
Yep, so, so there's three things, um, in front of you, uh, the first is the zone change. So there should be a motion, uh, on the zone change to convert this property to the S R D zoning district. I, I did, uh, in, back in December, you received a memo from me which summarized, uh, the highlights of the plan of conservation and development that was adopted in two thousand and thirteen. Uh, I referenced the standards from your zoning regulations in section ten and I also made reference to page seventy-three of the two thousand and thirteen plan regarding the housing recommendations. And specifically in that memo, uh, the site, um, was recommended, uh, for some consideration for, for housing opportunities. It's on a bus route, uh, it's nearby business development and it's, uh, near similar, uh, land uses in the neighborhood. So those are some of the criteria that were used in the, in the recommendations from the plan of development, so there should be a, a motion specific to the zone change. Secondly, there should be a motion specific to the site plan application. Just to remind you, there are three waivers that the applicant is requesting, two for landscaping and two for parking. I have eight conditions, uh, that you should, uh, discuss and consider. Uh, I would suggest those conditions, um, uh, there should be a caveat on that, that these conditions should be satisfied to the, uh, sta, the town staff satisfaction, sorry, uh, so the first one was the rooftop mechanical screening, uh, second was removing the fire escape stairs. Third, restriction on the, uh, outside permitted activity on the porches. Four, uh, that whatever the final determination on the windows, that, uh, the treatment is consistent and it may require, uh, further, uh, commission approval, design review particularly. Uh, five, uh, that the tractor trailer, uh, delivery, uh, restriction and signage be included. Six, uh, there was a condition from the town engineer regarding the town drainage connection and that a whole harmless agreement be provided. Seven, uh, that the final details of the exterior repairs to the brick, the cleaning and then the treatment of that be provided to town staff. And then eight, that, uh, there be some restrictions on the use of the accessory structure, particularly as it relates to, uh, activities, uh, in the evening. Uh, and then, so that was the second, uh, action. And then the third action, if you looked at the memo from the town engineer, uh, he was, he was suggesting that the commission also grant a positive referral to the town council on the acceptance of the triangular right-of-way on the corner, uh, there. Uh, so the council is the final arbiter of that, but this commission gets a, a referral on that. So, uh, first, zone change, second, site plan with eight conditions, and then third, a positive referral to the town council on the triangular right-of-way.
Uh, Peter, a question on the, one of the conditions for the use of the porches, we talked about that. In, in the past, I think we've actually had a list of conditions rather than just say conditions, we haven't talked about, you know, specific conditions.
Yeah, I, I think we, we, we did a similar, uh, condition on the Borden, uh, project on those outdoor patios. Uh, I, I think you, you talked about a bunch of different restrictions on what they can and cannot do out there, couldn't hang towels and things like that. Uh, we haven't yet, uh, worked out the final details of that, but I would suggest that similar provisions to that.
That's what I'm getting at, rather, because you're a special condition of conditions, what are the conditions?
So I think as, as long as the town staff, uh, and obviously we would bring in the town attorney, is at the table, you could handle that at the staff level and we could use the, uh, the Borden, uh, as the model.
I'm comfortable with using the model that we use for the Borden, we spent some time on those conditions of implementing those conditions as a part of this application.
Right.
And that's in your condition?
Yes, that was one of the conditions.
That would be part of the conditions inherent to the.
So no hot tubs, no, uh, broken down refrigerators, things like that, you know?
Hanging laundry.
Hanging laundry, that kind of thing, sure.
A small stove over there.
Yes, that kind of thing.
So I was keeping a pretty detailed list of the, the topics and you got all mine.
I guess on that last one, how did you say it in terms of the porches, I'm just curious?
On the porches, uh, they would, they would, we would have a, a series of restrictions, uh, to the satisfaction of town staff on what they can and cannot do on the porches.
Okay.
So, um, when we, we, we did the Borden project, we talked about, you know, allowing and, or, and not allowing things, uh, drying towels and we, we went through a whole.
Hanging laundry.
I mean, just as a catch-all, it sounds like in es, in essence, what we're saying is the, the, it's to be documented, the satisfaction of staff, but the intent is to prevent resident or use by any other parties that would in any way, you know, be impactful on the property or the surrounding area, noise, aesthetics, et cetera, right? I mean, that's kind of what we're getting at?
Yeah, I mean, it would be a, it would be a series of comprehensive, you know, right?
Okay, but it seems like they were, okay.
Is it sufficient that we can just refer to the restrictions we used on the board, I don't have a list of those restrictions in front of me at this point. We're going to adopt some.
And we haven't worked those out yet either, so both of them would be in a state of flux, but I think we can, you know, use, uh, whichever one comes in first as, as the model for the other one. So, uh, this one might end up being ahead of the Borden, because we're still working on some things for the Borden.
Or sufficient to say restrictions satisfactory to staff.
And, and the town attorney, I would want him involved as well.
And, uh, forgive me if I, if I misheard or didn't hear, did any, you're, you had eight, uh, recommendations for conditions. Which one or did any address the, the issue of the, uh, consistency of window treatment?
Yes, that was number four.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it sounds like your eight conditions pretty much cover all of the, uh, concerns, conditions that, that, uh, this mission has articulated relative to at least the, the architectural and site sign for the, for this property.
Yes.
Happy with the treatment of the brick and stuff and coffee?
I tend to think so, I, I think we've mentioned it to, you know, we've referenced it to the owner.
And, and it's in there.
And it's in, it's in, it's part parcel of, of, you know, what staff are going to be reviewing and, and is at least referenced in the conditions that have been articulated.
And, and the whole harmless agreement, I would suggest you just include language that says, you know, in a form acceptable to staff and the town attorney as opposed to them just unilaterally filing.
No, there's a standard, uh, the town engineer referenced, there's a standard agreement which he may have even attached to his memo, so there's a, there's a standard document already that exists that the town uses, so.
Okay, so, um, we need two motions, um, three motions, let's start with the first one, which is.
Question. Does each motion, I mean, there, there's really two motions or two approvals here, one's, you know, one is the, the aspect of the zone change and then the other is site plan approval. Uh, which one of those would, it would have the conditions attached or would both?
Site plan.
That's what I thought.
The zoning change would not have those conditions.
Can't condition a zone change, right?
The conditions for the zone change, basically.
But I think that all the motions should be contingent, approval of the motions could be contingent on all three motions being accepted. So we have a, we have a, we're voting on a zone change, but we also have to be, I'm not satisfied with the zone change if we're not going to approve the site plan.
Yeah, um, is there anything new in zoning that you're aware of, that you make a zone change? And I know I've always wanted over the years and we've gotten it, uh, no zone change without a plan to follow it. Now, can we put any condition in that this is, uh, zone change would be null and void if the plan does not go through?
So the answer to your question, and Joe can certainly weigh in on, on this as well, there is, you, there's no such thing as a, a conditional zone change. And we, we've wrestled with this as it relates to this, this type of project, so we, uh, have put regulations together that the, both, you know, they both have to be submitted at the same time. So when you approve the zone change, theoretically, you're also approving the site plan. If the project never came to fruition and at some point down the road, you didn't like the fact that this was still zoned multifamily, you could initiate another zone change back, uh, on your own initiative because, as a commission. But that's, that's the only way, we have, and we have gone back in one instance that I recall and rezoned a property back and then they had to come back in again and, uh, rezone it. So, uh, that's, that would be the solution to that, but in essence, you're approving the zone change without conditions, but you're approving the site plan with all of those caveats and, you know, we, uh, fully believe the two will go forward together, but they're, they're not necessarily tied together.
I guess just a couple of general thoughts, one is, I mean, I, I think there are ways we could consider in the future to maybe more expressly link the zone change to the development approval, might have to call it something else, but I think there are ways that you can do that, so you're allowing a certain type of use contingent on that exact plan. But for right now, I mean, it seems to me, number one, we're acting on a record where we approve the zone change knowing what we were told we were going to get. And number two, um, I think maybe the waivers of the landscaping setbacks and those things that they're asking for, those are tied to the plan that we're being shown. So technically, if somebody were to come in later and try to do a whole different project, I don't, I, I would argue that those waivers would no longer apply and they'd have to come back and get new waivers. So I think that could serve as a check on, uh, making sure the development is as presented.
I totally agree with you. I, I don't think it's a problem, I mean, for God forbid, you know, this project does not go forward for whatever reason, if it's approved, if this commission to go back and, you know, move to rezonate back to A1. I mean, that's, that's apparently.
And then anything di.
Anything different needs to come back anyway.
Anything different is going to have to come back anyway, so if this developer doesn't go forward with this specific plan, with these specific conditions, uh, they're going to have, somebody's going to have to come back, uh, and deal with you again. So you're not losing control of that like you wouldn't with any other project, so it is, it is to a certain extent tied together, but not in terms of a condition on the zone change.
And if you have, and if you have a concern on the second vote and the conditions that are proposed for that second, uh, motion that we intend to have, um, you shouldn't be voting positively for the first one.
And I suppose, is there anything that would stop us from just having a little discussion and consensus before we even start voting to see where people's thinking is
Right.
on the two components of this application?
No, probably not. So, I mean, I'll, I'll start, and I, I expressed it last time, which is that, you know, the, the zone change, the zone change, I, I consider the zone change and the proposed plan to be consistent with the, you know, with what's been put forth in the plan of conservation and development. And I don't see a viable alternative, this is, in my opinion, a best use of the current site and the alternatives to it are probably not reasonable financially for anybody to come along and, and do something differently, so, uh, you know.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, in other words, you don't see a single-family subdivision going into that quadrant?
No, no, or, or, or anything bigger, you know, knock it down and build something bigger, I don't see that as being desirable, much less, you know, financially appropriate anyway. So, to me, this is a, a very straightforward, I think we've done a pretty good job of vetting many of the issues associated with it.
And I, I would just add to that, I, I think if it stayed the way it is and it's still owned by the state of Connecticut and the state someday decided they want to put in an office building, I believe they'd be exempt from local zoning control and you might end up with a bigger traffic generator and a more intense use.
That, I'm glad you brought that up, Joe, because that's an important point that I hadn't even thought about and I know that's exactly the case.
You know, I, I think that one of the, one of the neighbors sitting in the second row came before us the first time and gave to me the clearest explanation of why this project, uh, should be approved. I think it was you that indicated that what else are we going to do with this property when we have school buses lined up, twenty-two school buses lined up for an hour with diesel fuels, uh, with diesel fumes and bus drivers hanging out on people's lawns. Um, and we have a building that economically to tear down, uh, to replace with single, with a couple, with a few single-family homes is not economically viable. Uh, we have a building that is deteriorating as we speak before us and we've had other projects in town that have, on the Silvestine Highway deteriorating. Uh, and we have a building on, uh, Jordan Lane, which is a deteriorating, the old, uh, facility. And we have an opportunity to, to bring this, this property back onto the tax rolls, um, and restore it, uh, to the beauty that it was before. I, I think is, uh, is a no-brainer for the town of Weathersfield and it's an advantage and I think that is an important aspect in the zone change as well as whether or not, uh, this is compatible and good for the community. And I absolutely think it is, I think it's a win-win for, for the town.
So, so.
You know, unless other people are going to move forward and give us their opinions before we do the, the vote, would it?
I'll, I'll indicate, you know, my direction, which is with, with some reservations, I think this, this is a reasonable use of, of this property. It's certainly ecologically the, the best use, uh, for, uh, for the site. There would be, you know, really highly negative ecological consequences for, uh, tearing this building down and building something new, uh, that's also. That's also very energy inefficient. So the preservation and future use of this building, I think, is overall very beneficial. I think it does create opportunity for providing decent, safe, habitable housing for people for, you know, for years to come. My chief concerns remain with the traffic, but I don't see that as being capable of being resolved through this application process. And so while I tend to have those residual concerns, I would tend to favor, you know, the application, the waivers included, you know, assuming that the eight conditions articulated by the town planner are also adopted as a part of the resolution for approval for the site plan.
All right, thank you. I think at this point, you know, that's probably sufficient. I think we know where we're going to go. Could I hear a very simple motion on the? S R D.
I'll make a motion. Change of. Application to approve 1965-17Z 170 Ridge Road, seeking a, for a zone change from A1 to a special residential development.
All right. Is there a second to that motion? All right, Tom. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Everybody? Okay, that's eight, that's eight of us. All right. On the second issue, do I hear a motion? Do you want to do that one?
I'll make, are you ready? I'll make a motion to approve application number seven, 1965-17Z for a site plan approval with the eight conditions as needed previously. End of three waivers. End of three waivers.
All right. Further discussion on any of those eight and/or the waivers?
We need a second.
Oh, thank you. Would you like to be my second again?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I assume that there are nobody opposed? Okay. Passes with eight. You are not.
I'm in favor.
Okay. Good luck, get to work.
Oh, and definitely a referral to town council.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, we need to move on to the third one, right.
Good luck.
All right, so as a note keeping, we're going to do one more. So. I'm sorry.
To what? For the triangle parcel?
The triangle parcel.
The right of way. We need to tell the town council that.
To accept the triangle parcel.
Accept the triangle, okay.
And this would be a parcel, the actual title transferred to the town or would it be right of way?
I think they said. It's town right of way to. It's title. It's their property to us in title.
Okay. I'll move.
Get the motion, do a second.
I'll second.
There you go. Clean slate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Thanks for reminding us. All right. Anybody need a breather or are we moving on to item two? Item two, a public hearing for application 1968-17-Z Midas Hospitality LLC or Midas. Made the same mistake last time. Seeking a special permit in accordance with section 3.2.2, 5.2, 6.1 and 6.2 of the regs to construct a 10,000 square foot daycare facility and its associated improvements. Welcome back, gentlemen. We've got all the consultants here done that. Fuston O'Neil, C J M. Louis Berger. Anybody else? Ockner? All right, so as a reminder, this has also been before us before. This is a continuation of the hearing. And Peter put together a memo kind of summarizing where we are. And if we were so inclined, suggested, suggested conditions on any motion eventually. And I believe there's, interestingly enough, eight, eight conditions in his February 5th memo. Would you like me to turn it over to you and summarize where you think we left off? Or would you rather just? Actually, I'm trying to remember which, what would be the best way to do it?
We, we do have a couple of things that we would like to respond to where I, where I think we left off last month.
Let's do that.
For the, commission members for the record, Kevin Johnson, Close Jensen and Miller. With me this evening is Mr. Corey Garrow, also of Close Jensen and Miller, and Mr. Vid Mida, owner of Comfort Inn and the proposed daycare parcel. So during our presentation in January, there was discussion about green space, required waivers and such. I believe the commission had some concerns about the green space, asked us to look into the possibility of adding some more green space. We did take a look at that. We looked at the possibility of doing 16-foot deep parking spaces. Zoning regulations do allow that where you have an eight-foot deep or wider or deeper landscaped area. So on the three parcels, we identified several areas. They're outlined in the green where we thought we could do 16-foot deep spaces and gain some additional green space. A quick calculation, the total of those various green areas would equate to approximately 1,254 additional square feet of green space. Now, also at last month's meeting, as part of our discussion regarding truck turning, templates and so forth, there was a concern with this traffic island that's on the CLP or, excuse me, the EverSource Energy parcel, that perhaps the trucks would not be able to make that turn. So there's a couple of options how to deal with that island. We could either shrink it an area, leave it its green, remove the tree that's in there. We could remove the island totally. We could stripe it, that's what the red indicates. If we were to remove that island in its entirety, that would be a reduction of 466 square feet. But if we did the 16-foot deep spaces, we would still come out with a net gain of 788 square feet of additional green space. So there's a couple of options as to how we can look at green space and that one island. I guess we'll leave it up to the commission, whatever your direction is. But I think those were the two major points where we were, what we were going to look into.
The 16-foot parking spaces means that you're expecting a vehicle to park over the curb?
Correct. Couple of feet, that's, I think that was the intent of the zoning regulation where you have eight-foot of green space or landscaping where you could have an overhang. If you only, if you only had three or four feet, then that probably would not work.
Any special signing needed for those kind of spots or?
No, I don't think so.
Compact or anything?
No, it wouldn't be a compact space, that's narrower.
Yeah, I just wondered if it was like a different designation.
Right. Now, subsequent, if you do recall, we handed out revised plans that responded to staff comments as of the January 3rd hearing. Again, that was another concern of the commission. Part of the reason, I think you tabled it, was to allow staff to review our responses, review the revised plans. Subsequent to that, we did receive another memo from the town engineer with approximately 10 comments. I don't think we have any issues with nine of the comments. Item number one, however, that has to do with placing a condition on the truck parking that all the trucks be out of that parking lot by 6:30 a.m. in the morning. Now, if you do recall, my response to comments that I submitted last month, we said, I said that the hotel would instruct any truckers that came in that they would have to leave by 6:30 in the morning. Well, Mr. Mida brought it to my attention, that's okay for the truckers that drive during the day and sleep at night, but they also have truckers that drive at night and come in towards the morning and will sleep during the day. So to put a condition of that on this plan would be a detriment to his business. So we would, we're asking not to have that condition imposed. Based on the occupancy of the hotel, Mr. Mida feels there's plenty of parking where if they did have a truck come in, there's probably opportunities where they could park in some of these spaces on the west side of the daycare.
So I guess I assume that the truck parking is on the private property though, right?
Correct.
So that would need to be addressed if we allowed that to move forward in the manner you just described it. In other words, don't put that restriction on it. Would there be something in the land, the covenant that you're going to do, the parking agreement?
Well, there has to be, there is an existing cross parking easement agreement today between the Red Lobster and the hotel that would just be extended with the other parcels. They basically are all going to interconnect and function as one.
Because the intent was trying to get parking for the daycare facility on the daycare property, right?
Correct.
But I think all you're saying is, who cares? If there's cross agreements, the daycare parking can park in the EverSource area.
Correct. And the other thing that Mr. Mida brought to my attention was, even though we designated this as employee parking and there's doorways in the back, those doorways lead to the playground, those are secure doors, they cannot be accessed from the rear. So even if an employee parked back here, they have to come down and enter into the front of the building. So chances are with the cross parking easement agreements and the anticipated availability of parking on the EverSource Energy parcel, that most of the employees are going to gravitate towards the front of that building anyways.
And then walk way down the side to?
Correct.
So remind me, do we have the property owner, we have, you're the property owner of the, of the daycare, but not, not the, not the hotel?
No, he's the owner of the hotel and the daycare parcel.
Okay.
And EverSource Energy is in the middle.
Because my reaction is, yeah, I kind of thought it was kind of weird that we were putting the parking back there for the daycare. I'm going to park up front anyways, right? But, you know, pulling the truck out in the middle of the day right next to the kids' playground might be something that the parents go, hmm, you know? So it's, but if you're owner of both, you know, that's something you would have to deal with, right?
Correct.
And your staff hasn't had any? Your staff hasn't had any problem with the trucking back in there?
No. My name is Vid Mida and I am the owner of the property. And I currently own the hotel and I plan to develop this daycare. And I own different daycares at different locations apart from this, similar ones. And this is going to be a secured building and where all the traffic entering into the building is through the main door, whether it is staff, parents, children, everybody enters through the secured main door. And the framed area that we have located is for pickup and drop off. And employee parking, we can ask them to park in the rear of the daycare, but they will walk all the way in the front and then as Kevin was mentioning, but they end up, if there is an open spot right at the beginning, so they would rather park there.
You have good communications between, would have, between both when daycare is completed?
Correct. And we are.
So you can deal with this parking issue if it comes up?
Correct. And we are putting an easement, permanent easement between both the parcels. So even in future, no matter who owns the buildings, we'll not have any issues. Thank you.
It's worked out with Red Lobster, right?
That was a few years back. We worked with them, yeah. And the same easement exists.
When was Jam been there and you were having to work with that?
Oh, okay.
But you haven't had any issues?
No.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just to talk to the truck turning radius, I mean, the, that was my comment and it's, it's not that I don't believe in the truck drivers, because sometimes what they do is like magic to me, but the, I just assumed that at some point that island or if they're trying to miss that island, the one up in front is just going to get mounted. So I'm just, I wasn't convinced when I saw the templates in the old plan because they didn't, none of the templates look like a sure thing to me. So that's, that's the only reason I was, I mentioned that in the last one. I just, I would rather not have an island than have one that constantly gets, you know, a bush run over, if there's a tree actually in this one, so.
You're happy with it, the way they, it is?
I, you know, as, as much as I don't want to tell them to cut a tree down, I just don't know what else to do. I just needed to make some kind of comment about it.
Yeah, okay.
And my preference is also not to have the island.
Is that all right? Confirmed.
Not seeing anybody raise their hands real quickly here with questions. Let me open it up to the public. Is there anybody here who'd like to comment on this proposal? Come up and join us.
Hi, I'm Paul Cop. I live at 100 Executive Square. And all my windows face the parking lot and the proposed new building. And I've been there for some time, so I'm sort of an expert. That matter anyway. I'm here for three reasons. One, to speak to the character of Mr. Vid Mida. And we're not very close because he walked up to me a few minutes ago and said, you are Paul Cop, aren't you? So it's the, and again, as a resident of, of the proposed new building and parking lot, I would like to address several problems with the circle, not this circle, the circle right in front of Executive Square. And I've had to pull two ladies in their walkers out from behind a bus over the past few years. And one I had to yell at to stop. It's, the circle's problem, excuse me, the circle's problem is illegal parking. And a lady bus driver spent two weeks in training because she ended up in the middle of the cir. A truck driver at 3:00 in the morning jammed his truck into the circle. And at 3:00 in the morning, it was not a pretty sight with the police yelling at him and him yelling at the police because there was no sign. Well, as, there was a sign, this size, eight by 10. It's no longer there. It was definitely carved out by one of the snowplows. It's not there right now. And I also would like to comment, if we have time, about a couple of the decisions that this body has made in the past. Not very difficult ones. As far as Vid Mida, he allows everybody to park in that lot. Remember, we get into Executive Square, caregivers, visiting nurses, grandchildren, children. And I've, I called him once and I said, you know, there's a liability here. He says, ah, you know, he's as good a neighbor as you can find. You'd love to have him as your neighbor. He allows the property manager at Executive Square to use his lot during snows when they have to move cars. Not a problem, you know? Again, I think. Again, I think that there's liability there, but you know, it's, that's, he's just a nice guy. Well, we talked about the buses a little bit. Again, the big problem is signage. The signage that they have there is no smoking. Now, that is strictly enforced. The other signs are fire lane. People have no idea what a fire lane is and what they should be doing. I mean, I'm no traffic engineer, but if you cut that circle down on each side where vehicles can pass, even when there is illegal parking, I think that would solve the problem. But there is also another sign that if you park here, you're gonna get towed. If we could put that in there, I think that would solve the problem as well. As far as what I see the town moving into, I see more and more apartments. And this town, and I think some of you talked about it a little bit earlier, was a, you know, single dwelling, you know, family homes. And I would like it to stay that way, but on the other hand, you know, the board and what you've just discussed, those are things that are, I guess, progress. Anyway, they pay more taxes, I suppose. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Kopp?
Yes.
Thank you for running for office over the years.
Well, there are some of you that-
I appreciate you being on the ballot, and it's nice you did that. And do you have a problem with the people, your people park in where the front of the daycare is going to be now, and of course, that would be eliminated? Do you don't have a problem with going back into your regular area, the paved area?
There's plenty of parking.
Yeah, it's just they like it's convenient right there.
Yes, it's, it's the first-
Like on the circle, right?
Yeah. It's the first right turn you can make, you know, it's-
Is that why there's parking on the circle per se? Because they're just all, they're all trying to be at the easiest access point to the Executive Square?
Well, no, it's, it's, the postman, when there's a new one, he parks there. I'm a United States vehicle, you know? And, you know, he's, he has always asked to move people dropping off. And so they put their car there, and they go up twelve flights and hit somebody, come down twelve flights. Takes a little bit of time. In the meantime, there are other vehicles there.
So it's probably not permanent parking, it's a lot of people just making temporary stops?
Well, yes. Well, no, there are servicemen that come, and, you know, they're gonna put up a new cell tower on the top of our building, and, you know, it's, they stay the whole day. And the property managers are tired of going out there, you know, yelling at them. The-
Are you on the council at the housing?
There is no council. I was president of the residence committee.
That's what I meant.
So, Mr. Kopp, I was just talking to Peter, and he could pass on the word that, you know, we should be looking into the issue. It may be beyond the scope of this particular proposal, but certainly the word can get back to the appropriate town staff, whether it's-
Well, that was my question really, was, in your language, did you guys have jurisdiction? You know? But somebody's gotta do something about it, or somebody's gonna get hurt. And, you know, that's too bad, but-
Fair enough.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Good seeing you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this application? So perhaps the, do we have additional questions for the applicant themselves from the board? Just to kinda summarize, Peter has, as we stated before, come up with some draft motions, if we were so inclined to be making a positive motion. Anything in particular? Oh, let me ask you this. So there's a landscape waiver, and as Peter looks at this, he's proposed a particular statement, as noted on sheet ten. Is what you're showing there already incorporated in the plans, or would?
This plan here?
Yeah, the additional green space.
No, it's not incorporated, because we didn't know what the direction the commission wanted to go in.
So is there any downside? I mean, when I, when you throw that, I said, I'm going, that's fine. I kinda disliked the-
No, it's just trying to respond to last month's discussion, is there a means by which we could get a little bit more green space to try and offset the lengthy list of waivers?
George?
One quick question I see on my notes here. Design review, did they look at your so-called, excuse me, architectural rendering?
We did go to design review. We do have to make another stop back there with final architectural plans.
Was it the generic version of some sort, but were you gonna present one specifically for this location, or is it exactly the same?
It's in architectural design now. What we showed was a footprint of the Shrewsbury, Mass. facility, which Mr. Midah just constructed.
I didn't mean generic and ancients, I meant you showed another.
Right. But this actual location is in architectural design now, so we will be going back to design review.
Oh, okay. Oh, what? Okay, so it will be different than what you presented last month?
It won't be different per se, it's just gonna be the actual building that's gonna sit on this site. Ours is a little more elongated.
So we could, we can approve if we wanted now, without design review or knowing?
Subject to-
Subject to review. Okay.
All right, so I think I got my head around two memos, right? So there's the Peter memo's got eight conditions, the last one being that there's also a memo by the town engineer dated January twelfth.
Correct.
Now, would, you know, would you have any concerns other than the parking of the truck, which is topic number one in Derek's, right? Are the rest of them, do you know them off the top of your head? Do you know that there are nine others, and whether those are okay?
The others are fine.
Okay. Do you know which? You don't have Peter's memo dated February fifth?
No.
Okay.
So just to summarize, my memo is just a summary of where you, where we are. So the first three are the three waivers, so there are eight comments. Design review, needs you to come back, which you talked about. You need the shared parking agreement. The rooftop mechanicals, I think you've got an area on there that just have to be on the screen down the rooftop.
And I believe we did add a notation to the plans for that.
Yep. There is a, there was a comment from the fire marshal about the oil tanks, which we talked about at the, in your last response.
Correct.
And then the town engineer's comments.
Right.
So they're all things we've discussed before. And then lastly, you would need to attach a condition to reflect revisions, so that this additional landscape area and the island being removed. So, three waivers, one, two, three, four, five conditions.
When you say the three waivers, because there was more than three landscape waivers?
Right, but three categories of waivers. You had the entire, and there's a reference to sheet ten, which had your, I think the term voluminous list of waivers was used. So, yeah, it incorporates all of those.
And I would like to just add that, again, going back to January, I did miss the parking in the front yard setback, so I also need those waivers.
So that's the third one, yep.
Okay.
So the landscape one is all one.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the off-street truck loading spaces is two.
Yep.
And then the front yard parking spaces is three.
Okay.
Hey Kevin, I thought you'd stay awake nights trying to get rid of some of those waivers.
I tried in the original design.
This is gonna be known as the king of waivers.
My apologies.
New, you brought it up. New lands, so number nine is new landscape, island layout, and elimination of the, what kind of curving, what kind of island is that? Elimination of that curving.
Semi-circuit.
All right.
And then the town engineer's comments, two through ten.
Comments, two through ten.
Yep.
Yeah, we eliminate number one.
So the public hearing is still open. Last thoughts, dialogue with the applicant before we close the hearing? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
I hear a first and second right over here.
Whatever.
Doesn't matter. Pick any names you want. All right, so the hearing is, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, so the hearing is closed. Let's move on to a motion. Would somebody like to craft the motion and know that, you know, I think Peter can kinda summarize it as well.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve application number nineteen sixty-eight seventeen Z. Means hospitality, seeking a special permit with the, Peter, help me with this, with the three design waivers.
Three waivers, and a series of one, two, three, four, five, and then nine, so what is that, five and nine is fourteen conditions.
Conditions.
Yep.
That includes the engineer's comments, okay?
Yes. Town staff approval. Yep.
All right. Everybody comfortable with that? Second? Thank you. All right, a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck. All righty, now we can move on to new business. Because we want more. All right, public hearing, application nineteen seventy. Oh, those were good old days. Nineteen seventy dash seventeen dash Z. Anna Papalbon, seeking a special permit in accordance with section five point two, point E, point two, permitted principal uses in automobile establishment. So this is for an, application is sixteen fifty-two Berlin Turnpike. Hello?
Hi.
Long wait. It's finally your turn. All right, so if you would introduce yourselves, and then just take some time to tell us what the application is about.
Yes, my name is Anna Papalon. I'm from Stellana Roseau.
And give us a brief summary of the, of the application, what it is you're looking for.
We sell used automobiles, and do our own repairs.
So this is a, this is basically a continuation of a permit they're seeking to, huh?
Renewal.
A renewal of a permit that we gave, what is it, two years ago now? Three years ago? August of fifteen?
Two years ago, right?
Okay. So I guess I could quickly run through Peter's description of this. The site did get a variance back in March of fifteen to do outdoor storage and display of automobiles. It is zoned RC. Primarily, the site plan that we approved provided the opportunity for twenty-two spaces for storage and display of vehicles, so that's twenty-two vehicles for display. Two additional parking spots for employees, and one handicap space, so twenty-five parking spaces on the site. You probably can all read the rest of it. We made them put cutoff lighting, and controlled access with a four-foot-high chain length fence, striping and regrading. I think I can confirm that the regrading of the parking lot area all took place. Is the lighting all, did they do everything that was appropriate during the first one?
So the site was repaved. There were issues on the site plan that needed to be complied with, so I would say the improvements that were specified on the plan were, in fact, completed. I did go up there today, and I noticed some spotlights on the building, which I haven't been by there at night, so we'll need to talk to the applicant about the spotlights. They're kinda blinding, and obviously he needs lighting on the property, so we may have to, we may have to work on that. But the improvements as specified on the site plan were completed to the satisfaction of town staff.
So, so over the, over the course of the two, what did we just decide? Two years, two and a half years, there have been four enforcement issues, two for temporary signage, I assume for, you know, sale signs, that kinda stuff? And one order for block, for vehicle blocking the sightlines, which affects me personally. And the last one for the expired permit. All right. So, questions for the applicant as they care to continue with the current regular requirements? Go ahead, George.
Yeah, Peter, why, why, why are there still problems where zoning enforcement's often had to write three, write them up three times in the last six months?
Like, maybe you should ask the applicant that question. I can't answer that question, but-
That's what I'd like to know, that's number one. Then I went through there today even, and saw a number of cars parked up behind, when you work on your cars inside the building, right up in the, behind you, you know, in the other property, there were about seven or eight cars parked there with no registration place. Do those belong to you?
Yeah, they're gonna be junked out. They're gonna, the junkyard's gonna pick them up.
You're gonna fix them up?
The junkyard's gonna pick them up. We already called them, they're gonna take them off.
How long have they been there?
Probably a couple of months. Because some of them were for repairs, we were trying to fix them, but it's not worth it. So we're gonna junk them. We decided to do that.
You ought to be acting on things to conform to our requirements that were approved a couple of years ago. I don't think you're doing a very good job of, there were even a couple of cars in the next vacant parcels to your south.
They're not, they don't belong to me. That was, that was, some lady from the hotel crashed the car and left it there, the car's still there, I said, today, it's, I don't own that part of the property. She don't answer the phone, she left the phone, we called her, she never picked up the car, the car's still. The lady who crashed the car left the car, it doesn't belong to us, the car next, in the next, between the Yankee Candle and us.
By somebody else?
Yes. The lady got an accident in there.
Who'd you call?
The lady who got an accident left the car there, and it's been there for like three, four months. And she said you were gonna pick it up, we never got a hold of her, so.
How does the town, Peter, how's the town?
She was living in the hotel in the back.
Because this is the whole, the whole area is not good looking. And that includes behind, next door.
Well, that's limited to-
And he seems to have the right number of vehicles, when I went by today, I counted them, for what we allowed. So that seems to be reasonable, in the last, last time, even though I questioned why we, this commission, even approved cars at that site when our regulations don't allow it. Other than that, answer the prefer.
So to give you the history, just to refresh your memory, the applicant successfully went to the zoning board of appeals and got a variance to allow them to have the outdoor car sales. So that was their first step. They then came to you to get the DMV licensing, which you granted, subject to a number of conditions. One of the conditions was that the permit had a definitive lifetime. They're here tonight to get that renewed. So, that, those are the answers to your question. You put limits on the number of vehicles. Obviously, you had-
It happened today, it happened today when I went by.
Obviously, you had concerns about this kind of activity, and you put conditions on it that you felt were satisfactory, so that's why we're here today. So, and to answer your question about enforcement, that's, you know, why the zoning officer ended up having to write the various enforcement orders to the applicant to get compliance. So you put this particular application on a short- various enforcement orders to the applicant to get compliance, so, um, you put this particular application on a short leash and, uh, cause you had concerns about performance, and, uh, they're here in front of you tonight to talk about those issues and, and get...
I'd like to see the town enforcement of the adjoining properties, too, and the vehicles that are sitting there looking crummy, are there concerns?
I'm not happy with the use, but there's nothing we can do, the variance has been granted, um...
Is it a legal variance?
Yeah, it's a legal variance, it's been required, I'm assuming it's...
Is it dairy, that kind of thing? Come on, I read state statutes, I know.
So we're here, we're here this evening on a renewal of the special permit which had been previously granted, and I don't see any substantial change that has occurred on the property or the business, you know, since the time that the application was granted, so I think our decision is kind of limited, um, as far as, you know, we should approve it.
I mean, I, I tend to agree, um, a- as long as they're playing by the rules we set up, right? So there was a time when the cars were out, uh, close to the road, there were more than twenty-five cars.
Yeah, but that's why we, when we paid it, we put the road, with the flower path, and we paid from the Connecticut State property, not, we didn't touch that, we, behind that. I mean, I took a loan against our home, so we spent a hundred and seventy thousand dollars making that property the way it is, it took us a year to get it done, and we are working hard for it and, you know, it's... I think the property looks a lot better than what it did in the past, and, and I even covered the hotel with the fence, I mean, I, all my, we put all our efforts to make it look the way it is, and, uh, neighborhood is very happy with us, they've been buying cars from us, we have four and a half star service and sales, if you can look at our reviews, and, uh, I mean, I, I'm, I'm thinking I'm doing pretty good.
So, I, I, I agree that when I look at it today, um, it's in pretty good shape, right, I mean, it looks, looks good and the...
Thank you.
You know, since I use that intersection quite a bit, when that car was there, it was pretty annoying, and I know you're on state property, and that was part of the concerns that we had initially, right?
I did move it right away.
So, so as long as you stay within those confines, I tend to agree with what Commissioner Silver is saying, which is that, you know, we, we agreed with it once, you have, you know, this variance, um, so stay within the, I'll call it a footprint, stay within the rules, and, you know, I, I guess we're kind of okay with it.
One more...
I'm okay with it, yeah.
One, one more thing, um, contrary to my esteemed colleague, I was down there today, and, uh, I guess you get older, your numbers get weaker, I counted more cars than allowed, but that's okay. I think there are more than twenty cars on your lot for sale, it was limited to twenty, I counted about twenty-five.
It was twenty-three, twenty-three, and, uh, there's two for sale, the other two were repaired, they have plates on it, and, and I, when you came in, I told you that's a repair.
Sorry, counting.
So I did tell you that, you look at the guy plates on it, so it's a customer.
You're gonna look at it, you're, you're gonna look at it and substantially comply with the, with the order.
Of course I will, yes, sir.
Question for town planner, um, if we renew the special permit, uh, what happens to the fines that, uh, would have, uh, would have accumulated or have accumulated since the citations by the zoning enforcement officer?
I'd leave that up to the zoning officer and how, you know, he...
We paid him.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we paid our taxes, we got, we got everything the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I don't, I don't get involved in that end of the, the operation, so, um...
My question was whether or not our, our reapproval had any impact upon those, you know, those fines.
Sounds like you paid him, you paid him, so...
And I've been upgrading our inventory for newer cars with lower miles, we're, we're trying our best, you know?
We put the cameras...
We got cameras, and when they get into an accident in that street, the cops come in and we're giving the video and...
A lot of accidents result.
Yeah.
What about the particular fine for the, uh, the, the lapse in the permit, because that, you know, that's, it had been, I think it expired around, uh, two or four months ago, and, uh, it'd be only if this act, if this, uh, commission acts tonight to approve the renewal, uh, then they come back into compliance, so there's a hundred and fifty dollars a day from the time that permit expired.
I, I think the zoning officer gave them until January eighth to submit a reapplication and did not seek to impose any fines for the period up to January eighth, as I read his letter.
Yeah, that's, that is true.
We came in December.
Did apply.
We came in December to do that, and...
We, we, we submitted application, I think, on December.
On that particular citation.
Right.
Okay, that, appreciate the information.
Any other questions for the applicant, any concerns, so as, as we think about...
Oh, I don't, I'm, I'm, well, I'm ready to discuss here, I don't...
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just thinking, are, are there parameters, so think about the...
Is there a hearing here?
So, just think about the parameters that are here and whether you'd want to or consider changing that, and that's what we got posed to the applicant. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application? Alright. George.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I think the action by the zoning board of appeals is illegal under state statutes, now, I'm not as familiar with state statutes as our attorneys are, but I had to deal with them over many, many years when I worked the state government, and, uh, I think I know them well enough to know that I think that was an illegal action on their part to, uh, overrule us and make, make the change they did to allow display outside of a building, I don't think that's allowed in our regulations, and I think maybe this commission or someone, someone somehow should, and I don't like to say these words, but should have, uh, taken lawsuit action against the zoning board of appeals for being, taking the action they did. And I therefore cannot approve this application, although I think he's doing a reasonable job, such as it is after several citations, uh, at least as of now, he's looking good because he has to be in front of us for an approval, uh, I, I just don't think the whole area looks good, I think it's decrepit. If this kind of a proposal were anywhere near Old Weathersfield on the other side of the tracks, where the historic district is, we would be run out if it was approved, that's the way I feel about it, the closest thing is down on Maple Street, I guess, but that's, that's certainly not the kind of conditions here, down there, they do keep them housed, so, uh, I don't really think that, uh, I can, and I urge myself of commissioners to vote against this application.
This one was, this one was for two years and it ran late, uh, we can consider, you know, the duration, I personally am still not convinced that it should be, you know, forever, I would still put a time limit on it. I don't know what other people are thinking, Joe?
Yeah, I guess I'd be inclined to maybe go for another two from now, if that sounds reasonable to people.
Alright. Any other questions for the applicant, and if not, maybe we should just close the hearing?
To close the hearing.
Thank you, is there a second? Uh, George, George second.
I would move to approve the application, re-imposing conditions from one through...
Let us, let us take a vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, alright, so moving on to, uh, a motion.
For how long of a period?
I would move to approve with the exact conditions as last time, the only difference is the duration in condition six would be two years through, um, February sixth, two thousand nineteen?
Twenty?
Uh, two thousand twenty.
Twenty, one year.
Yeah, do you run it in the data publication or the data of vote, or it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't go?
Uh, two years, right?
I'm just say, uh, I'm just say February fifteenth, twenty twenty, how's that, uh, for the timing?
Okay.
Can I ask for something? You know how we put our flag that says, um, we finance and says welcome on the other side of the entrance? They only allow us to have it, um, two weeks, two times a year, I would like to ask if I can have it all the time because that's the reason why it makes people wanna come in, I mean, that welcome sign looks, it makes you come in, I'm trying to make the place look even better as, as much as I can, um, I would like to see if I can have the flags all the time, it's the only thing I've been, I, I wanna ask for, please.
Shall we open the hearing?
Cause it looks good when it's, when it's that...
Not to rain on the parade, but you don't have the authority to grant that, it's in the zoning regulations, there's certain limits, they can't waive it.
You would have to get a variance from the zoning board, you'd have to go back to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
So we can talk about it, uh...
Another time.
Another time, and, but this, this commission cannot do that.
Understood. Thank you.
That was an easier answer than I thought.
Yeah, it was nice.
Alright, so we have a motion, uh, with some conditions, uh, and a second, right, we got a second? Was that second? Tom?
Tom?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anyone oppose? Alright.
No.
No, one no, thank you, so it's seven and one, George is a no, alright, keep, keep up the, keep up the clean work. It is, yeah, I mean, it is, you know, two year again, right, I mean, we don't wanna see the violations.
We're gonna be watching.
We were calling tomorrow, so we can, they can, they can come and pick it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to record it, it has to...
Oh, yeah, okay, I got camera, remind you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, public, public hearing, last one, uh, application nineteen seventy-one dash eighteen dash Z, Tom, Thomas Baldwin, seeking a one-lot subdivision at one twenty-seven and one forty-one Griswold. Waited a long time, gentlemen.
I have to give you guys credit too for your patience, I can sit there.
You get to get up and go to the restrooms. Alright, uh, if you could introduce yourselves and then, uh, give a, a brief description of what you're up to?
Um, I'm Thomas Baldwin, uh, the applicant, representing the estate of my father, Myron L. Baldwin, Jr., and, uh, my seat surveyor is here.
Hi, Ken Picard, Marlboro, Connecticut, licensed land surveyor. P I C.
Alright, so is this as straightforward as it appears, it's never been subdivided before, so it's, is it a resubdivision? Okay, so why don't you describe it?
So, uh, just in, in summary, this is a, a one-lot, uh, resubdivision, it was historically subdivided, so it becomes then a, a resubdivision, but it's only the creation of one lot, and then the modification of a, of an additional property line to add, uh, property to the abutting, one of the abutting lots, um, there is a memo dated January thirty-first which summarizes it, uh, there is one, uh, suggested condition, uh, that, uh, per our standard requirements, once the properties are, are, uh, resubdivided, that, uh, properly revised boundary surveys for the newly created lots are, are placed on file, uh, as we require, you do have a, uh, memorandum from the town engineer dated January thirty-first as well, with, uh, some, uh, conge, uh, suggested, uh, revisions to the plan, uh, that should be factored into any motion that you are so inclined to make, but in essence, it's a one-lot, uh, resubdivision, the lot would front on Farmstead, uh, rather than on Griswold, uh, the plans, I think, are, are pretty, uh, illustrative, so it's pretty clear what they're asking for, uh, they have made, uh, plan revisions based on my initial, uh, set of comments, and, uh, I think the only comments remaining are those that were, um, submitted by the town engineer, so he's asking for some changes to the labeling, um, there's no uh, variance is needed for the barn, so that's number two, uh, number three, um, he's, he's concerned about some tree protection, if the tree is going to remain, so I'll let the applicant, uh, respond to that, um, he wants the driveway for the new lot added to the plan, um, he wants a concrete monument installed, uh, on Farmstead, uh, he wants some coordinates for two property corners shown on the plan, uh, he wants the sheet numbers revised, so it's, uh, one of two rather than one of one, and then obviously, uh, the standard condition that once the plans are finalized, that a, a final mile R be submitted for signature of the commission.
Have you discussed those with the applicant?
I believe the applicant received, uh, the memos, I'll let the applicant respond to any of those.
And also the street one?
Yeah, it was...
And the driveway when we don't...
The driveway, we figured we're gonna, once the lot is broken out, whatever's type of house lands there, uh...
You could put them on the plan.
Put them on that plan, but we'll show it, we'll revise this plan to show the driveway, the tree protection, there is one big tree up there in the front, um, yeah, beautiful, uh, it would be, I'm assuming you probably wanna keep that there.
If we can, again, we're gonna, um, sell the lot, and the builder is gonna decide what he wants to put in there, so, I mean, we would hope that he keeps it, and I think that will improve the value of whatever house he ends up building, if he can arrange to, uh, you know, keep it, I'm sure he will.
Is it in the building square, it isn't even in it, I don't think.
I, I think, yeah, you, you, I almost have to keep it.
It's a beautiful tree, and it, and it's, um, putting a concrete monument, that's not an issue, those, you know, we have to put pins in normally for, uh, the subdivisions, to mark out the new lot lines, um, milars and, and the, you know, that's no problem either, that's typical.
Peter, we have to put those conditions in any approval, or, or what?
Uh, you should put them, yes, as conditions of approval, so the, um...
The memo one.
So refer to the memos in the motion, so there'll be one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, seven, seven conditions.
We don't have a public hearing, Billy?
This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing.
I know who he is. Must have something to say.
But just to summarize, there's nothing, there's nothing, uh, uh, nothing that requires a waiver or anything?
No, it, it, it complies in all respects, um, with your zoning requirements and your, um, plan requirements, so there's no, no issues, we did get a, a number of phone calls from the neighbors, but once they understood the nature of the application, uh, they felt it was at some point inevitable that the lot would be split off, so...
I would think the neighbors up there are very sharp and tells...
But they obviously understood that and are not here tonight, so, yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
So, so let's close the hearing first, okay? So, George, would you like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, I'll, I'll do that, he'll second it.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That's what we really meant.
And Dan, and Dan will second.
We're getting older, so we do things reverse, that's...
Okay. Alright, all those in favor of closing the hearing say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Alright.
To make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the conditions as indicated are...
As indicated in the, uh, January thirty-first memo, and there are seven of them, is there one that doesn't?
So number, number two goes away, and the town engineers, uh, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, the milar, you don't have to, that's a standard, and then I had one about the, about the separate...
One through six without two, or not?
One, one through seven without two, and then the last comment on my memo, so, okay, yep.
Was there any town concern about the utilities, the overhead utilities going through there, are they off to the side enough that...
They were, yeah, the utility review, I...
Deal with it at the time?
They'll, they'll have to go through the separate, uh, review practice at the time of building with the, with the various utilities, but they'll determine that at the time.
That right away going through it doesn't make any difference, they're gonna have to revise it, they have to get it...
Right.
Alright, so we have a motion, and did we get a second? I think, uh, Dan is gonna second this one, too.
Right.
Uh, all those, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anyone oppose? Alrighty, good luck to you.
Thanks, thank you.
Long night for that, but...
Good luck, uh, good luck, Kevin.
Should've got that one done first.
Other business, uh, oh, we forgot to ask the other question. Is there anybody from the, how did you, from the public, uh, why didn't you bang it? Next time. Yeah, no, alright, other business, what do we got going on? There's, uh, minutes.
Minutes, uh, look good, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Second. Alright, so just, uh, make sure we got it up, there's eight of us here, I know that, uh, we must have at least seven people.
I think we have six.
Six? Okay.
I, I'll abstain from this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so all those, and we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anyone oppose? Okay, so the people that count are myself, Ryan Allard, Joe Hammer, um, Dave Edwards and Dan Silver. Is that the six you came up with? Thank you.
I was just looking at the minutes.
And two abstentions.
And George as well, because he was here.
George. So what else? Do we have to do, I think Denise is probably looking for people to confirm whether they want to go to the planning and zoning.
Denise, don't forget me this year, if I didn't tell you last year.
Alrighty.
So George wants to go?
That is March twenty, this is March twenty-second. March twenty-second. Is that a Thursday? Y'all have to go, because I'm getting an award. And so is Tony Homicki.
Oh. Depends on how you count.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, if I don't count. I don't count. Is that what you're saying? Alright. I would expect to be going as well.
So that's George, Tom, Mr. Harley, Mr. Homicki. Any others? Want to attend? We'll send. Yeah, there's food. I'll put Margiata, question mark. I'll, we'll send out an email and if, just confirm that through us. We got some time to decide.
Alright, is that it? What else? Correspondents?
I just gave you a copy of the state of the town message, just to let you know what, what's gone on in town in the last year or so. So that's in your packet as well.
Peter, that, that's a good report. And I was disappointed, do we ever get notice of these? I know these come up every January and I somehow might have liked to have gone to it, but.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if we, if we send a email from us, but there's a whole thing that goes out from the Chamber of Commerce and it's a Chamber of Commerce event, so they send out the.
I might like to have gone to hear you. Did you get a good job in this?
I'll, I'll have the, make sure they add you to their emails. How's that sound? Just also, we're interviewing for a new zoning officer on Friday. I think we're interviewing five candidates. And then we just interviewed.